I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[23.02][36.15]- [Inaudible][37.15][37.15]- Ms. Davis.[38.15][38.15]- Here.[39.15][39.15]- Ms. Ferguson.[40.15][40.15]- Yes.[41.15][41.15]- Mr. Kennedy.[42.15][42.15]- Yes.[43.15][43.15]- Mr. Moore.[44.15][44.15]- Yes.[45.15][45.15]- Ms. Perkins.[46.15][46.15]- Here.[47.15][47.15]- Mr. Rucker.[48.15][48.15]- Here.[49.15][50.28]- Approvals for minutes June 27, 2016.[53.38][56.88]- Motion to approve minutes for June 27.[60.02][62.88]- Ms. Davis.[63.88][63.88]- Yes.[64.88][64.88]- Ms. Ferguson.[65.88][65.88]- Yes.[66.88][66.88]- Mr. Kennedy.[67.88][67.88]- Yes.[68.88][68.88]- Mr. Moore.[69.88][69.88]- Yes.[70.88][70.88]- Ms. Perkins.[71.88][71.88]- Yes.[72.88][72.88]- Mr. Rucker.[73.88][73.88]- Yes.[74.88][74.88]- Current expenses, last check number 64566, written on 7/8/16.[76.48][81.48]- Motion approved current expenses.[83.38][86.18]- Motion approved current expenses.[87.28][90.58]- Ms. Davis.[91.58][91.58]- Yes.[92.58][92.58]- Ms. Ferguson.[93.58][93.58]- Yes.[94.58][94.58]- Mr. Kennedy.[95.58][95.58]- Yes.[96.58][96.58]- Mr. Moore.[97.58][97.58]- Yes.[98.58][98.58]- Ms. Perkins.[99.58][99.58]- Yes.[100.58][100.58]- Mr. Rucker.[101.58][101.58]- Yes.[102.58][102.58]- Moving on to reports. The Steam Thresher Show is starting this week. I urge all council and anyone to get out there at the opening ceremony. I think it would mean a lot to them. That's Thursday at noon, I think it is.[116.61][118.21]- Ten.[119.21][119.21]- Is it ten? Thursday at ten? But I know I look forward to it and I hope you guys do the same.[124.61][129.61]- How do you do?[130.61][130.61]- Nothing.[131.61][131.61]- Chief McKee.[132.61][133.41]- I just have a couple things.
The July 4th event went very well. We didn't have any incidents other than a minor injury that was reported. There was a lot of participation with the police department's Pioneer Project out there. We had a good time with that. I would like to thank the events committee, the public works department, and the fire department, and the guys at the police department for all the work they did up there, all the hours they put in. And lastly, we did our written exam and physical agility test for the new hires. Friday, I think, we're scheduled for interviews on the 19th next week, hoping to get someone hired by August. And due to the recent events around the country, myself and the rest of the officers, we're even more concerned about officer safety, especially working just by themselves like the guy does right now. That's all I have at this time.[187.26][192.26]- President Burton.[193.26][194.46]- I didn't know if we wanted to schedule a next meeting for budget, like September,
October. Can we be ready for, uh, for budget? For budget, being budget? I mean, we've started, I mean, our committee, personal finance committee started.[214.29][214.29]- Yeah, but I mean, to give them, to give council anything, no. We wouldn't be ready.[219.68][219.68]- I don't know, maybe until like October?[221.31][221.31]- October.[222.31][222.31]- Yeah, yeah. Time line.[224.31][242.88]- Mr. Penn, you have, um, working on the, uh, the, uh, the sessions.[249.88][256.58]- We do, we actually have a meeting scheduled for the 13th Wednesday at 6:30 in all council
chambers.[262.62][264.62]- Planning on zoning?[265.88][265.88]- Next meeting is July 20th at 6:30 at the municipal.[270.12][272.88]- Ford.[273.88][273.88]- Mr. Kennedy.[274.88][274.88]- Yeah, we met last week or the week before to give you all enough. We have finished covering every item that we wanted to go over for our comprehensive plan of the park. So what we intend to do next meeting is kind of rank our priorities and rank what we're looking to do in some form of priority so we can kind of set our budget and kind of have a plan forward and we'll bring that to the council also when we have that. So I think we had, how many, Tara, a list of twenty-some or so proposed improvements. And so given our budget, we're going to try to figure out what's more, most important in our opinion and try to have a five-year working plan. We have two additional things which are in front of you tonight. One, we're bringing forward the barn, the equine barn proposal. I know I've mentioned this several times over the past couple meetings. Took a little bit longer for us to put together than we had anticipated, but we wanted to make sure that we brought it to you accurately. So Ms. Reed is here to actually propose that to you and go forward over what we have for you. So if you have any questions, I'm just going to ask her or me, but she's going to take the reins at this point.[348.41][348.41]- Sure.[349.41][349.41]- Just to run you through, to start off with, on the left side of the paper, we pulled
some costs together to build stalls in the existing horse barn because the, most of the stalls are gone. The cost there due to material cost for the front stalls and you have your stall partitions which will be your sides and rubber mats that go in place. Possibly looking on that and to utilize a village staff if possible, otherwise an entire line out would be a little, would be more additional money. Then down at the bottom on that side, you'll see items that need to be done to the barn itself, such as new windows and screens, lumber for the stalls that go in inside the stalls, a new metal rail, electrical and lighting improvements, some structural needs that need to be completed. The one end of the barn has some damage where the masonry block has been hit and pushed in, so that one needs to be replaced. And then we'll need some ventilation. So kind of looking at total barn renovation costs, we're just under $90,000. And then we'll also need a turnout area, think of it kind of like an arena area. Price on that is around $70,000. So just, just basically under $100,000 to get the barn to where it needs to be if we were to start boarding horses again. And then in the box, it looks at the annual income that's possible. There are the possibility of 28 stalls. In actuality, I probably wouldn't be looking at running all 28 out right now, probably using some of the stalls for tack and that sort of thing. But if you were around 28, you're looking at just over $100,000. The services that would be included with that would just be hay, water, picking of stalls, any additional special feed, anything like that, veterinary services, all that. That would be extra, that would be charged on top of $300 a month. And then there's a breakdown on what our expenses, annual expenses would be as far as hay and then labor time. So looking at total annual expenses of around $56,000. So these are preliminary costs, just to give you an idea of what we believe it would take to get the barn there and then yearly operating costs and then possible income. So we do look that there could be some potential revenue and additional camping that would be coming in for people. If we could hold a couple of the stalls open for people that have horses, we could also, would be, depending on the type of arena we put in, it's large enough, rodeos, junior rodeo in particular might be interested because we have those events very so often which would be turning money in. So just some different ideas. And then we've also been informed that there's different sponsorship opportunities. We could get each individual stall sponsored, put a company's name on it. I guess that's very popular. We could also possibly get the arena sponsored. I guess Broad Eastern Palace possibly might do that. So there are some possibilities there to help get some of the improvements funded. So, any questions or?[561.41][562.41]- Do we know if we looked at the area, any area of horse rentals and are they at capacity? Are they able to keep capacity?[572.12][572.12]- Yes, actually, there's been a large boarding facility that has recently closed because they sold their whole land and everything for development. So there is a shortage of, or a need for boarding at this time. So, and we've also investigated the monthly fee that we're charging and we're kind of right there in the middle, if you will, or maybe just a little on the lower side even. So we don't believe we'll have any problem. And some feedback, we've already had folks contact us once they heard that we were looking at doing this and there is, those seem to be quite a bit of interest, so.[614.54][614.54]- We had, if I may jump into our, we had several folks who were, for lack of a better
term, horse people in the area. And when I say horse people, locals, Plain City, that currently take their horses either to London or to Marysville and have them explain to us how it's difficult to find these places to take their horses, especially ones that they trust. And two, that it's just how difficult it is for them to go so far to get their horses and how it would be great and there are a lot of folks like them, they believe, that would need the services locally. And Mayor, if you want to add anything to that, because certainly, as I understand, you have horses.[650.82][651.41]- I do.[652.41][652.91]- Would I be a client?
Yes.[654.91][655.82]- Well, it just, and I'd say that's your-[658.82][658.82]- I mean, now, we drive to London for boarding.[660.82][660.82]- Yeah.[661.82][661.82]- Because we do have problems finding boarding here.[663.82][664.54]- Okay, and that's, that's similar feedback that we received from other folks.
And honestly, to me, when we were looking at this, that was my largest concern. Is there a need for the product? Because while it sounds great to build a horse barn and kind of bring back some of what makes Plain City great and bring back some of its heritage, that's wonderful, but at the end of the day, if the product is not something that customers in the area want, then it's largely a waste of money. But my curiosity was satisfied that there is a need for the product. Now, obviously, as in any business, there's certainly, it's certainly a risk as any other business, but we talked to five, six different people in the area and then we got the same feedback, which is they would love to have this kind of product in the area. This isn't something they can get basically within a 15 or 20 mile radius. And there are a lot of folks similar to that.[716.82][717.54]- Is there any additional insurance that's needed or are we kind of responsible for
that boarding?[723.32][723.32]- You fall under the high equine law, is it, is, my rate, Paul, that's a separate?[728.32][729.41]- Yes, doesn't have to do with that necessarily.[731.41][731.41]- Certainly.
When we start operating, we will be, it's a proprietary function. So if we start operating something for profit, something like this, that would be proprietary function, we would have to be in protection of those.[744.32][745.22]- No, but as far as the high equine law, that protects horse-[748.12][748.82]- Yeah.[749.82][749.82]- -boarding facilities.[750.82][750.82]- But what about people on property?
I mean, just saying, you know, if the horses are out or we start showing, do we have that special insurance to cover?[759.32][759.32]- Well, I know personally, at our farm, as long as it's posted, they have signs, this
property is, is a horse facility and then it's the high equine law posted.[768.12][769.62]- I'm sure you'd want to talk to our care here, make sure that we have that to our
understanding. It's not unusual, I mean, I haven't heard in a lot of places, but I know that there's always, fully subdivision that do have agricultural uses or associated property. So I'm sure that there'd be some kind of coverage for that.[788.12][792.32]- Well, yeah, I was just wondering, would this barn currently being used for steam thresher storage, has there been any thought, discussion, what's going to happen with that?[802.82][802.82]- We have been in discussion of steam threshers, trying to come up with different ideas for them.[809.12][809.41]- I know some of that equipment is not really mobile.[813.82][818.12]- Well, obviously, if, if we didn't decide to take this project on, I mean, we, we would have to move that stuff out in order to-[825.12][825.12]- Right.[826.12][826.12]- ...to operate the barn.[827.12][830.72]- I was just wondering how that's going to affect the show going forward, if that would move everything out of there.[837.12][838.12]- I mean, that's obviously something we need to, we need to work on.[840.32][840.32]- Yep.[841.32][842.62]- And this isn't something that's going to happen overnight.
It's, I don't think that, I think there's plenty of time for discussion with steam threshers if that's something council decides they want to do. But I know it is in the back case, it's mine.[858.32][858.82]- Sure.[859.82][860.12]- No doubt, and we're certainly cognizant of those issues and try to figure it out
the best, best we can if, I mean, the council wants to put forward the barn.[868.32][869.54]- Do you have any thoughts on how we're going to cover the $100,000?[872.82][873.12]- Well, that's kind of what we wanted to discuss is, go ahead, Tara, I'm sorry.[876.82][876.82]- Oh, no, um, possibly looking at some of the existing funding that's, that's there
now and then looking towards sponsorships, so.[885.32][887.22]- I know, Tara, we kind of came up with a per stall.
I mean, if you break it down, you can come out with a per stall cost. Like, for example, if we build out 28 stalls, you know, what this $89,000 or $96,000 comes out for, per stall? And we can look at, I don't know whether or not, what is that, about $3,500 or something like that? Not quite that, about $2,200, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, about $2,200, you told me how to add that.[915.32][915.32]- It's a little bit method.[916.54][916.54]- Is it?[917.54][917.54]- Yeah.[918.54][918.54]- 28 of them can do 100,000?[920.12][920.12]- Yep.[921.12][921.12]- Be less than $2,500 a piece, right?[923.12][923.82]- It would be worth three a piece, about 33 a piece.[927.22][927.22]- Okay, so around $3,000 plus or minus. And so what we were hoping, and this isn't something that we came up with, I'm certainly not a horse person, so we got these ideas as to what's customary in the business and what folks have seen, that maybe perhaps we would get businesses or even individuals donate the $3,000 and to get, you know, a plaque on the stall that say, you know, stall rehabilitated or donated to such and such family or, you know, car of lumber or, you know, whatever. We also have the green space fund, which is sitting and has not been in touch for many, many years. I take it from your look, Liz, if you don't like that?[968.04][968.04]- I'm just listening to you.[969.04][969.04]- Okay. Sorry.[971.82][971.82]- It's all right.[972.82][973.04]- So we have that as an option. You know, obviously, this isn't something that we decided to bring forward if we didn't think it could ultimately be profitable. As with any business, I think the rule of thumb is about three years before you're going to start to turn profit. I don't know if you just look at the income and I think that's pretty much where this is at, given our costs. That's assuming we don't defray any of the costs through those donations. But we certainly wanted to bring it to you all with the idea that, you know, worst-case scenario, we had to fund all of this ourselves, what it would cost you. We certainly don't have anyone writing us a check, we haven't gotten that far, but again, the process of having someone build out or donate for a stall seems customary in the industry, so.[1011.82][1012.32]- Who, who would take that on, that responsibility?[1015.12][1016.04]- What responsibility?[1017.04][1017.04]- To go after the sponsors or donations, who, who would do that?[1020.04][1021.32]- I don't know that we've actually discussed who would go walk around with their hand out yet. I mean, that's something we would have to coordinate.[1027.82][1029.82]- And, and the people that would work the stalls, how, would they fall under the parks
director? Would they fall under Kevin?[1036.22][1037.62]- Hey, I would assume that they would fall under the parks director. I really haven't given that a lot of thought on structure or staffing at this.[1044.82][1044.82]- She's, she's a horse person as well?[1046.72][1046.72]- She is, yeah. But Linda is.[1049.12][1055.82]- Any grants available or have we looked at that?[1059.22][1059.22]- We have looked at a few.
I know the Farm Bureau is considering, it's not a large grant by any means, but it is a grant. We have been in talks with them.[1069.54][1079.22]- Are you looking for a decision tonight?[1081.82][1081.82]- No, no.
I mean, obviously, I think it's a lot to take in. There's numbers here, I think, I don't expect anyone to make a decision on it. Perhaps we can bring it back to council for a discussion or if we have an upcoming work session, this is something we might want to hammer out then. As the mayor said, I mean, obviously, this is something we expect to happen overnight. And it's, you know, I, it's a large investment in the community, so I would expect everyone to give it some thought and try to talk that out. If you have more questions, we can talk about that, so.[1114.62][1116.82]- Thank you for your work.[1117.82][1118.62]- Thank you.[1119.62][1119.62]- All right, so the other issue that I have in front of you is the proposed changes to the park fees that we would like to see, the Parks Committee would like to see. On the top of you have current, the current park fees. It says youth building is $75 a day. That shouldn't read $60 a day. That's the current change, or current price. Below, you see the proposed fee structure that the Parks Committee would like to have council adopt. The only significant, the only changes that you see there is raising the youth building rental from $60 a day to $75 a day. We are looking at updating that particular building. We would like to drywall it, we would like to put windows in it, we would like to make it air-conditioned. We got a price quote on just the windows and the doors and that was $25,000.[1170.41][1170.41]- Correct.[1171.41][1171.41]- But we want to make it into something that people would like to use for a multi-purpose rep kind of room. Right now, it really doesn't function in that capacity. And so hence the proposed $15 change to that. We'd also like a multi-day full park rental. Obviously, you know, we've been talking as a committee or as a council, a lot about the price of a full day park. This is our idea to have ease that, with still providing revenue into the park, is a multi-day rental. So in other words, any rentals in excess of one day would have a discounted rate. So if you got it for two days, it would be $337 per day instead of $650 per single day. So if you were renting for a week, obviously, you could do the math, it wouldn't be $650 a day, it would just be $337 for each of those days. So to be clear, it wouldn't be $650 the first day, it would be $337 each day if it's a multi-day rental. We had a concern in the Parks Committee, I mean, $337 to some may not be a lot of money. And we didn't want an organization or a family or a group of people to come in and just rent the park and make it exclusive so no one could get into it for, you know, only 350 bucks a day. So what we would build into our rates is a multi-day discount must be an event that's open to the public. And by open to the public, obviously, you can charge for admission, but it's not a wedding reception, for example, where only so many people, certain people are welcome. So what we wanted to prevent with that policy is to prevent people, you know, basically taking the park over, so to speak. If it's a public event, multi-day discount or multi-day rates would apply. Any questions about any of that? Those are the only two proposed.[1282.72][1282.72]- The gentleman that was here a couple of meetings ago talked about the camping. Did you guys by chance discuss like a weekly camping rate? Like, is there for a week, the seventh night is free or? I know he was talking about having us do something like that. Have you guys got a chance to discuss that or not?[1304.82][1305.41]- We've, we've often looked at seasonal camping, weekly camping.
There becomes challenges of how we maintain it around people's property. We never had enough data to prove how long people are staying there. And we're hoping to gather that now with our software. This should be, up to this year, it's two years, we should have some good data. It's something we're considering, but not ready to make any kind of recommendation as to a discount.[1339.41][1341.32]- This looks good to me.[1342.32][1343.41]- The multi-day, is it just two days?[1345.82][1345.82]- Yeah, like I said, it's any day, any rental contiguous, obviously, in excess of one day.
So a two-day rental, a three-day rental, a four-day rental, assuming it's all together for one event, would trigger the multi-day discount or multi-day rate, whatever you want to call it.[1364.12][1365.04]- My only concern would be like the multi, the multi one is almost half of the single
day.[1373.32][1373.32]- Right.[1374.32][1374.32]- Are you going to get people who go ahead and take the multi because they can get two days and only be there a day? And then if we had somebody potentially that could have taken, taken that other day, I know we don't have a good head start.[1387.12][1387.12]- We actually talked about that, we did talk about that, whether we should make it something
like $100 a day so it's not half another, just, hey, just give me two days and not use the second day kind of thing. Obviously, that's a concern of councils. We did discuss it and we're, I think we came to the conclusion, we highly doubted, that someone would actually just give me, it's not like another candy bar with their two for a dollar, you know, what the heck, give you two, but I guess we thought that that probably was unlikely to happen. But your point is a good one and one we had discussed. So if you would want to make the rate, you know, something like, I don't know, 375 or 400 to dissuade that type of activity, that's fine. But we were trying to get the rates as low as we could to address concerns. Obviously, if we make it less than half, then, you know, let's play rates on top.[1439.41][1439.41]- And we're hopeful that with reduction of the multi-day and having camping fees, we
would perhaps gain some revenue off of people staying there in campground.[1450.82][1454.82]- The only other thing would be, do you want it an even number, set up such an odd number
when everything else is even?[1460.22][1462.04]- You want to call it 330?[1463.32][1464.82]- That's real CD.[1465.82][1468.04]- If I'm screaming 350.[1469.62][1472.54]- All right.[1473.54][1473.54]- Well, hey, you're on the committee, you could have changed it.[1475.62][1478.82]- All right, so, I mean, is 350 that nice round number?[1482.32][1483.32]- As much as.[1484.32][1484.32]- Yeah, okay.[1485.32][1485.32]- As much as.[1486.32][1486.54]- All right.[1487.54][1487.54]- I still think the 650 is just a little high because you're going to have to tap on trash service, which, how much do you think that's going to be?[1494.62][1496.04]- I, I mean, I don't know what those figures are, though, if someone's trying to have.[1499.12][1499.12]- Yeah, it depends on the size of that.[1501.12][1501.12]- So, and then they're going to have portable restrooms and we still have the horrible electric out there.[1506.22][1506.91]- Well, to my initial point where we listed and ranked, where we will do that, electric
is definitely on the list. And so our next meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, the same day it might be scheduled, I just realized, we will, electricity is, I'm sure, probably priority for many of us because it's something that needs to be addressed.[1528.82][1529.32]- Exactly.[1530.32][1530.54]- Yeah, because, you know, I was just, when we were out there July 4th, I was thinking,
you know, I can only imagine writing a check for 650 and we've got a pickup room and trash, we have to go in a portage on, there's no restrooms, and we were running around unplugging this so we could plug this in. I'm just thinking, what's the value here for 650? That's what I was thinking, as somebody else coming and renting the park.[1554.12][1554.91]- Well, I, I, I'm honestly very proud of the list that we have and the effort, the
six months or so that it's taken to basically identify all the priorities in the park. Obviously, it's going to take time, but I'm confident that once we are able to accomplish those things, I think you'll be thinking 650s about.[1573.41][1574.32]- Okay, but until then, couldn't we discount that to get some people in there?
Because right now, we don't have anybody knocking on the door, I want to rent the park.[1583.12][1584.32]- That, I guess all I can say is, I think it's not a discussion that we had as a committee.
And so, I mean, I'm not about to speak for the committee. But as far as the changes to the youth building-[1596.12][1596.12]- Just giving you my opinion?[1597.12][1597.12]- What's that?[1598.12][1598.12]- Just, just giving you my opinion.[1599.12][1599.12]- Yeah, no, no offense taken at all. I just don't want to speak for everyone else in the committee who's working very hard and their opinions are just as valuable as mine, so. So with that said, how does everyone feel about the change to $75 in the youth building rental and the multi-park? Is it something we feel comfortable in voting today? Because if so, I'm concerned that propose that we make those changes.[1623.62][1626.32]- Effective when?[1627.32][1628.04]- Uh, when would you like that? Would it make sense for them to make it effective?[1631.12][1631.12]- January 1?[1632.12][1632.12]- Yeah.[1633.12][1633.12]- January 1, 2017?[1634.12][1636.82]- Paul, you need to draft?[1637.82][1638.12]- We're going to adopt the change.
We've done it by policy or, adopt the policy by resolution.[1643.82][1651.82]- Is there anyone here opposed to Mr. Lofton drafting that?[1655.04][1660.91]- I'm just concerned about the 75 because it's the youth building.
I don't know, when I was a kid, the reason it's called the youth building is because it's for the youth. So, you know, if the Boy Scouts wants to use it and do, to have a meeting, are we really going to charge them $75 to have a meeting or?[1679.32][1679.32]- It's my understanding youth groups are not charged, are they?[1681.54][1683.22]- Yeah, they charge everybody.[1684.41][1685.62]- Well, I mean, the reality of the matter is the rates on that building have, it's been,
as I understand, a very, very long time since they've been raised. And we're not going to improve the park if we want to by just handing it out to well, well-deserved groups, I give you that. But if we want to do what we want to do to the building and make it a $650 value, so when people do come in and say, wow, electricity's nice, wow, it's nice and air-conditioned here, this is clean, I mean, all that stuff is going to cost money. And so, you know, the, the raise from 60 to 75, I hope, I mean, we really didn't, we tried to be very conservative with what we, what we brought here, so.[1726.72][1728.32]- Can I add one?[1729.32][1729.32]- Yeah.[1730.32][1730.32]- We, we also proposed a law that, doing the grant program to assist those groups such
as the Boy Scouts wanted to rent the park or whatever and couldn't quite, you know, to help lessen them because it's more of a civic-minded group, then we would offer them a grant or think of it as a discount. But that way, it gives us a chance to review and kind of keep it open for all civic groups to help lessen those costs. So we, we discussed possibly ringing that back up before council, too.[1761.82][1763.91]- Like I said, then I think two or three meetings.[1765.62][1765.62]- Did you?[1766.62][1766.62]- Yeah.
And you, we're revisiting the grant program because it was kind of, for lack of a better term, pork-barreled in with everything else that was unpopular, but I didn't get a sense that the grant program in and of itself was something that was largely unpopular. I think we, we had a, we had a paper describing the grant program in and of itself. Obviously, I don't have that in front of me today. And what I proposed a couple of meetings ago was to have a $2,000 grant program, have a grant committee- ago was to have a two thousand dollar grant program, have a grant committee basically review applications and be able to disburse monies for folks like the Scouts or whomever wants to apply for grants to use our park. And we had a list of criteria that the committee could use and follow in order to do so.
How often is the youth building used?
Fairly often, every weekend it's booked, and that's what we, we're also getting into, it's getting pretty competitive to get there. During the week, it's not used much at all, and that's why we hope to build some recreational functions that we can use that building for, but on the weekends, in the summertime, it's very often used. And I would like to add that we currently aren't getting a lot of, we're not getting any demand for civic-minded groups that want to use that building, that those requests are just upcoming.
Part of our, part of our picture is, we would love to have that building available for, for example, like bingo for seniors, or for anybody. You know, if someone wanted to hold yoga classes in there, I mean, you know, those kinds of things, and currently, it's just not, when it's ninety degrees outside in the summer on a Wednesday afternoon, I mean, you might as well stay in and watch Price is Right, because you're not going to play bingo in there, it's just too hot. And that's going to cost a lot of money to make it that way, and honestly, we've talked about, you know, we had a lot of talks about, maybe we could have some kind of area for these things to happen, and all those talks included building new buildings. Well, this building doesn't need to be built, and the money it costs to get that building to where we could do those things compared to the other discussions we had, is what it costs to build a building to do those things is no comparison. It's the most efficient, cheapest, cost-effective way to have that in Plain City for our citizens. It's going to cost some money, though.
I definitely think that, I personally have seen a need for a facility like that in Plain City. Do you think there could be like a separate rental rate through the week, where you, it's a little bit less, where you would maybe draw in the civic groups?
Yeah, my hope is, with Linda being on board, once we get there, I know she's gone out and talked to Edgewater and the President Country Place and Pleasant Valley, to see if there's a desire to have senior programs there. They are, they are thrilled with that they actually made a donation toward getting this up and going. They would love to have a place that they can just come gather, meet some other folks like mine of like age, and get to have some recreation. Once we get there, I would assume that there may be another conversation with you guys of how we're going to structure that. We're not, we don't have that together yet, and it's in the very, very early stages of even thoughts and conversation with staff, on how we can make that happen.
Does it talk, when you're looking at renovating, are you looking at this year or next year?
I can't answer that yet. As I said, we have a list of things that we've identified as needs for the park, needs slash desires for the park. And in our next meeting, what we're going to do is take those twenty things, and each one of the Park Committee members are going to, just as Rock Mill explained, process the day use, right? We'll use the same process, we're going to identify personally, one, two, three, four, five, then we'll come up with an aggregate mean of each particular project or desire, and we'll have then the will, the general will of the Parks Committee as to what we think the order these things should take place in. So once I have that picture calling, I'll have a much better idea of...
Because if we're looking at renovating now, then it doesn't go effective until January first, is kind of the point, because we'd be ready.
I doubt, and this is just me speaking, I guess I don't have any more information than a general feeling, I don't know how other people are going to, you know, rank their desires and needs, but I doubt that it's this year. You can certainly throw a towel what you think, but we're probably going to concentrate largely on the stuff that has to happen, the safety issues, things like the restrooms where we don't have any, any currently. I mean, I assume those things are going to take priority, that's just my assumption, but I wouldn't be largely surprised if we came back saying this was, you know, our top number one item. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't plan for it.
And is there any Parks grants? Have we looked at Parks grants at all for any of us?
We've discussed it with our Parks writer. You know, until there's, there's got to be some public participation, the committee has to recommend it, so there's a lot of things, steps that we need to do in order to get like a nature works grant. Certainly, that's on our radar, and as soon as it's not in its cycle right now, as that comes around, we're certainly going to look at it, and then I'd probably match it up with what the Parks Committee's goals and priorities are, once they're done with that process, and it should line up fairly nice with, once they're done with their process, that the nature works grants open up.
Anyone else have any other questions for us? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all Parks.
Do we want to have Paul, that was the initial request?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Parks is not there yet.
Yeah.
So, the three fifty per day for the multi-park rental, raising the youth rental fifteen dollars per day. Is there any, anyone who's opposed to having Paul put that together? All right, great, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, go back to Mr. Vaughn, we skipped you, you were out of it.
I just have a few things, real quick. We did make a conditional offer of employment to two individuals for the position of maintenance worker pending their physical and drug screen. Hopefully, we'll be getting this wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. And the only other thing I have is, the Madison County engineer has the forty-two West Avenue project out to bid. Bids are due back to his office one week from today. The project will be awarded two weeks from today, and he's hopeful that the project will get started yet this year. Hopefully, we can get it finished this year, but certainly needs to get it started this year.
I hope, because that's a huge concern to our residents, I get, I don't know, many calls every day. Personnel and finance.
We meet next Monday, July eighteenth at six o'clock at the Village Meeting Room.
Mr. Moore, fire?
Being this month is going to be the twenty-first.
Ms. Davis, comprehensive plan, any news?
Yeah, so we have launched the survey, it is on the Plain City web site, so please take time to fill that out. We have had a great first response. In fact, Josh said that within the first twenty-four hours is the most responses he's had at any place he's done, so that's good. And there's cards up here, if you want to see the address for it. So our next meeting is on the twenty-seventh at six-thirty, and we'll probably start reviewing some of the responses.
And then, survey closes end of July, right? Is that July?
We'll keep it open for a while, he said, but we'll start looking at the responses as they are.
Is that here, Paul?
Yes, it's here.
Thank you.
All business. Third reading ordinance six sixteen, walk-rowally closing.
Motion approved, third reading.
Second. Ms. Davis, yes. Ms. Ferguson, yes. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Third reading, resolution fourteen sixteen, general fund police appropriation amendment.
Motion approved, third reading, four sixteen, fourteen sixteen, excuse me.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
New business, golf carts.
It's going to be ordinance seven sixteen. Any questions, concerns from council?
No, they haven't already voiced.
Motion to approve, ordinance seven sixteen, second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Videotaping council meetings, as you can see, we have someone videotaping, so now, thank you, Mike. The OPW C legislation, is this the emergency?
Yes. It's resolution fifteen sixteen.
It's a resolution authorizing the village administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and/or local transportation improvement program for the Maple Street and Gay Street waterline replacement project to execute contract as required and declaring an emergency.
We need a motion first to waive three readings?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to waive three readings.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
And motion to pass it as an emergency.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
It's, that one was fifteen sixteen.
A resolution authorizing the village administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Iowa Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and/or local transportation improvement program for the Converse Avenue, Shepherd Avenue Waterline Replacement Project to execute contract as required and declaring an emergency.
That'll be sixteen sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
So motion to waive three readings on sixteen sixteen.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Motion to pass sixteen sixteen as an emergency.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Full appropriation amendment.
Seventeen sixteen.
Seventeen sixteen.
Motion to approve, first reading, resolution seventeen sixteen.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
I think they asked for a motion to go in executive succession pursuant to RC one-two-one point-two-two G eight for the purpose of discussing negotiations with other political subdivisions, respectfully requesting of economic development assistance in the information directly relates to public infrastructure improvements or extensions of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project.
So moved as well as compensation of public employee?
Also compensation of a public employee?
Got it? Anything else?
We will be returning afterwards, I don't, I don't want to jiggle one shoe.
So moved.
I got you. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.